The hour is upon us for the Mount Pleasant Village Board meeting, January 24th, 2022. And we'll begin with, well, wait a minute, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Will a clerk call roll, please?
Anastasio?
Here.
Claussen?
Here.
Eastman?
Here.
Washburn?
Here.
Hewitt?
Here.
Batia?
Here.
DeGroot?
So let's move on to public comment and input. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments on any matter. Please listen for the President to recognize you, state your name and address for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes. Could we hear from Karen Hermanson? Name and address, please.
My name is Karen Hermanson. I live at 7135 Old Spring Street in Mount Pleasant. First of all, on the website, it says the meeting starts at 6:30. So there are people going to show up at 6:30 wanting to make public comments, and that'll be passed. Why did you do that? One has to wonder why the rush to increase board terms from two to three years without asking for public input ahead of time or putting it on a ballot referendum. Considering the ongoing and worsening disaster of Foxconn that we will all be paying for for decades with no clear benefit, one is tempted to believe that the board members responsible are attempting to delay being held accountable. It is impossible to overstate how you failed the public, the people of Mount Pleasant. Property taxes have soared. Ours went up over $800, and most of that's from Mount Pleasant. Another company, Intel, decided that Mount Pleasant is not a community they want to come to, and we will be paying millions for water that we won't be using.
True.
And we continue to pay Mr. Lewis and his company millions. For exactly what? You did not do due diligence and willingly allowed yourself to be conned by a company that has a worldwide reputation of overpromising and reneging on those promises, and we will be paying through the nose. And for that, you want an extra year before the voters can decide whether you should remain in office? By the way, you name other similar municipalities that have three-year terms, all of them in our other counties. Not one of them is in Racine County. Thank you.
Okay. Was there anybody else wishing to speak publicly? I have nobody else signed up. Going once, going twice. So we'll move on from public comment, and let's move on to consent agenda. Trustee Hewitt.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the items in the consent agenda.
Second.
So I hear a motion by Hewitt, seconded by Eastman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that motion carries. So we're going to move on to finance legal licensing, discussion possible action to adopt a charter ordinance 4-2022 regarding trustee terms to increase in length from two to three years to take effect beginning in the spring of 2023 election.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Charter Ordinance 4-2022 amending the length of terms for village trustees from two to three years.
Second.
So I hear a motion, a second. Thoughts from the trustees?
I have a concern about this one. I don't believe that the intent is, as Ms. Hermanson said, I believe that the intent is to provide consistency in the leadership of the village. However, I do understand that people can perceive the lengthening of the trustee limits. So I would like to propose that we discuss possibly putting it on a referendum instead of voting on it this evening.
Well, the motion is for passing the ordinance as it's stated, and we might be able to circle back to that if it's the, if it's, if that's something that the board has any interest in. Was there anything else?
No, I spoke to Mr. Smith, and he told me that there is the option for members of the public to bring forth a referendum petition. If we passed it tonight, they would have 60 days, I believe, to bring forth a petition requesting it be on a referendum. Or we could decide as a board now to just go with the referendum.
Did you want to add anything, Chris?
Yes, trustee Anastasio is correct. Unlike any other ordinance that you pass, this does not become the law immediately or shortly thereafter of your voting. The state legislature has governed when charter ordinances take effect and put like a delay, so there's 60 days, and that's referenced in the ordinance itself that you have in front of you. And so that if the citizenry wants a referendum, that's what that waiting period is for. So it's kind of leaves it up to the people that if they want to, they'd have to file the petition. I also would note that if you read the ordinance, this change in term length does not affect any, any person currently holding office. So none of you, you would have to run for reelection and then get elected at a future date for this to affect you. So it does not lengthen any of your term lengths, which, you know, is important to note.
Well, I think that negates the argument that the commenter just made, that, you know, somehow we're self-dealing ourselves into a better benefit by going to three-year terms. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment, obviously, it's not an ordinance that we have to take it lightly. We have to think about that. I thought about that yesterday. I was looking at the website of the Wisconsin League of Municipalities to educate myself more about, you know, what the other counties doing and what the law is. I think in regarding, Mr. President, as you said, there have been comment that the village board is trying to get more power, you know, for each one of us. Like Attorney said, and you said, this is not for any of us who are on the board or who are for reelection, even this year or next year. If I take my seat as an example, this will not apply to my seat till 2027, not 2023, not 2025, in 2027. And who knows what the life will be, whether I'll be on the board or whoever it is. So my point being, if anyone called me and says that I'm doing it for the power 2027, nobody knows whether I will be running, somebody else will be running. So I think the way I see is, in light of the fact that our attorney advises us that the citizens still have what I would call the veto power, they have 60 days. So the way I see is, you elected us to make a decision on behalf of the residents, and this decision, if it passes, is a decision to change the ordinance, is actually a recommendation to the community for the future of the village. Because two years is really, especially for the new trustees, those who have been here for many years, you know, you gain experience. But if you're a new trustee, it takes you one term, maybe two terms even, you know, to get a grasp on, you know, the municipal business. So again, the way I see is, it is absolutely not any one of us to control, to get the power. I gave you example of my seat not till 2027. I see this as a, you elected us to make a decision, and this would be a decision, recommendation to the community, and if the community feel otherwise, you still have the veto power, whatever 60 days or so forth. You can ask for the referendum. So these are my comments, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, thank you. I put a lot of thought into this as well, and being one of, being the new kid on the block, you know, but having a lot of village experience because of other committees I was on and being very familiar and having worked with the departments. What I, the reason that I do support the three-year term is for a variety of reasons. And number one and most importantly, I think, it, the three-year term is going to attract people that are invested and interested in public service. It's going to prevent disruptions. For those of us sitting here on the various committees that we're on, as we're looking at our strategic plan and goals, we're planning three years out. We're planning four years out. We're planning projects that are five years out in our utility expansion work or our stormwater drainage district committees. In our fire and police, we're having to look out and, and create budgets that are allowing for the future to buy new equipment and new trucks and so forth. So we are constantly having to plan far outside of what a two-year term currently allows us to do. I think it allows us to better immerse ourselves in the village itself. With the growth in our community, whether you like it or not, whether we, you know, Foxconn is here, all of the changes are here. I wasn't on those boards, but they are here. Managing them needs consistency, and it needs paying attention to the strategic plans that we have in place. I feel also that in view of Mr. Smith's opinion, that in fact, the village residents do have a lot to say about this and have the ability to say something in the next 60 days. That'll come out. I did make phone calls this weekend to our constituents. I had received a phone call as well from, from Commissioner Tradié from the county board. His biggest concern was that it was happening fast. And the good news was that prior to me getting his call, I had already made my calls, and I made sure that I reached out to people that I know in this village that are, that are, that are people that are thinking on the left side and the right side and in the middle side and people that are, have lived here a long time and understand our community. And of those people that I called, two-thirds thought that, that, that the three-year term made absolute sense because of the fact that it would allow us to sit in place with some continuity, that in looking at the last several years of elections in our community, many of us have run unopposed. And so we're constantly going through this two-year gyration of re-electing ourselves. And it certainly still gives people the opportunity to run against us if they want to. None of the people that I talked to felt that the referendum was critical. They respected the fact that we as a board were making a decision based, and we have a very strong board, and, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud to be a part of that. And I think by giving us that extra year, it allows us to accomplish more goals, to set more goals, to accomplish them, and still be able to well-serve the community and still have rotational years so that there's always opportunities for people to run for village trustee in those, in those odd years and become part of the board as well. So I, I do support it. I think that if we vote it through tonight, I would hope that all of us would agree that it's a decision that the public will have the ability to come back and let us know, do they want it in a referendum? And if they do, they'll bring the petitions forward, they'll get their signatures, and we'll take it to referendum. So, Mr. President, that's my comments. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ann Marie?
Almost everything Nancy said was what I was going to say as well. I received phone calls from a couple of supervisors and residents, and I also solicited input from residents. This is about consistency, in my mind, and continuity for all the things that we are planning. She brings a good point with our strategic planning. We're looking out to the future. And to me, a big thing is too, the past several, or at least a couple, elections, no one has stepped forward. It is beneficial for us. It's not about power. It is about what is best for efficiency and functioning.
I, I got one call on this from the same supervisor that caused, that called everybody else, but for, for anybody to think that, you know, we're somehow acting fast on this, that's absurd. This is something that we've been discussing for over a year now. We brought it up and brought it through at the strategic planning end of things. This is something that's, that's had multiple conversations. So I just, I don't buy it that somehow we're acting quickly and we're trying to pull the wool over somebody's eyes. What this is about is providing for a more stable, managed board. And in my view, that just makes for good public policy. This is, this is a public policy thing, and it really has nothing to do with padding our terms or, you know, gosh, it's, it's hard enough to get somebody to run for a two-year term, let alone a three-year term. But, but the reason why it's being done is because it gives the board and the village of Mount Pleasant a much more stable operating board. I'll give you the last word.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to give the impression that I'm opposed to the change. I'm not opposed to the change for the same reasons that everybody else has said, the consistency, the ability to look towards the future and not be planning a campaign, you know, after every other year. But my concern was more about the residents who are feeling that this is, you know, too fast or that it's for personal, personal power. And I think that sometimes we have to be aware of the perception, whether it's the accurate, whether it's an accurate perception or not, but that is the perception of some people. But I do, I do support the change from two years to three years. And I understand that people who are opposed to it have the opportunity to bring forward a referendum within 60 days. So I will vote for it because if they, if there's enough people who want to bring forward that petition, it'll happen. But I don't think that there is really a big groundswell against this by any means. But I did want to have this discussion, and I appreciate hearing from my fellow trustees that they also support it.
The only gas against us that I've heard or, or read was from the, the same people that buck us on everything else that we do here. So, you know, from, from my perspective, yeah, okay.
I just want to correct myself because the past discussion we had, for my seat, it was 2027, but I'm looking at the monitor and this says 2025, so just for the record, I want to correct myself. But again, that's down the road. Who knows what the, what the future will be, you know? So I just want to correct myself.
Okay. So on the matter of, where are we, ordinance 4-2022, roll call, please.
Anastasio?
Aye.
Claussen?
Aye.
Eastman?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. So let's jump down to Public Works. We've got discussion, possible action to approve ordinance 3-2022 amending Chapter 78 of the Village Code of Ordinances pertaining to weight limits and parking on certain village roads. That's got to be something Tony's interested in.
Sure. So these are essentially just a couple of cleanup items in our, our ordinances. One subsection relates to weight limits, specifically three-ton weight limits.
Oh, wait, I got to cut you off. We have to have a motion.
Very good.
All right. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 3-2022 amending Chapter 78 of the Village Code of Ordinances pertaining to weight limits and parking on certain roads.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to put this into discussion. As you were, Mr. Byer.
Yeah, so back to what I was saying, the first subsection relates to special weight limits, specifically a three-ton weight limit, which is really unrealistic. And essentially, we've just eliminated a lot of the roads that had this restriction on them within the village. You obviously saw that in your packet. And secondly, we made a change in the parking restrictions section. This is specifically related to the reconstruction of Oaks Road. Part of that reconstruction also included actually delineating two driving lanes in each direction, and what we've moved forward with is eliminating any parking on both sides of that street. There are no dedicated median turn lanes out there, and because of the school and the other residential developments out there, this is definitely the prudent way to ensure that that traffic can flow safely out there.
Mr. President, this also came before the Public Works Committee and was approved.
Thank you, bud. Okay. So on the matter of ordinance 20, excuse me, ordinance 3-2022, roll call, please.
Anastasio?
Aye.
Claussen?
Aye.
Eastman?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye. Motion carries. Regarding reports, item seven, announcements, recognition of village residents, employees, memorials, and non-political community events. Anybody have anything?
Other than our sorrowful loss on Saturday night at the Hacker game.
Yeah.
And the irony of last night's Tampa Bay game. Other than that, I have nothing.
Well, Sunday morning and again this morning, I was happy to be in my warm, snuggly bed while we had highway crew snow plowing and, and doing their fine work.
Yes, they have a very good job.
So again, kudos to the highway department.
Again, Mr. President, I'd like to give kudos to the Mount Pleasant Department of Public Works because they do a fantastic job to come and clean their roads. At 3 o'clock, 2 o'clock, I could hear them, and I'm sure that many community do that, but kudos to them because I have never heard any complaint in the Mount Pleasant, and they keep the roads clean and for people who have to go to early, early morning work. Thank you.
Well, as long as we're in the kudo given out department now, we should probably recognize Matt, Chief Matt's group. The traffic, you know, has, has made the newspaper. Matt, Chief Matt's group. The traffic, you know, has, has made the newspaper. They're doing fine work, as we hear, and they're, you know, getting involved with arresting bad guys, and it's all good stuff.
Bad guys and gals.
And gals.
Well, if I may add.
They're very busy.
If I may add, you know, I'm sorry, chief, if I, I may give the, I don't give the, I didn't give the kudos to you because I'll be giving it every week. So I don't want to get into that habit because you guys are doing great.
Well, this, this is why we change things off.
Speaking of the traffic unit, Channel 4 was here last year, so they should be on the news tomorrow.
Oh. Oh. Oh, Channel 4 was here today?
They were here last week, but they're going to air it tomorrow's news.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, I have seen evidence all over in the last couple days of people pulled over. So they've been busy.
Come watch a session of municipal court, and you'll see more evidence of it.
One last motion.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.